...to seven o'clock.
Sometimes it gets to be a long night.
Yeah, it is. Well, seven o'clock, we call meeting order. Any additions to the agenda from councilors? There's two from administration, six-six is CPR road closure, and then eight-six is Lorna Anderson's report, and eight-seven will be the mayor's. Any other additions or changes? Harry Dunn, somebody wish to make? George Lee? Any question on George Lee's motion? Harry Dunn, all in favor? Okay, moving on to minutes. May 28th meeting. Any questions, errors, or missions? Mr. Taylor moves it. Any question on Paul's motion? Harry Dunn, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, we have a presentation for the delegation, so if you'd like to come up to the hot seat. Laura, it's yours.
Thank you for having us. I'm Lori Gare, I'm the coordinator. We live up in County Early Childhood Development Coalition. And this is Katie Wade, she's the chairperson. So we have some new statistics to share with you, so that kind of gets us out and talking about early childhood, and then we have some more information to share with you guys. Because we're a coalition, we are not an organization. We're really a group of organizations who all serve the same purpose and sit at the same table. So there's a variety of organizations who are members of the coalition, and we work together and collaborate together to further any gaps, barriers, any needs that need to be addressed by early childhood, and try not to duplicate services and just get talking about what we can do as a community. So those are some of the organizations that are involved.
Because all of our goals have to do with promoting healthy families and healthy early childhood development, so we might as well be working together. So our job is mostly just to bring the organizations together, and then a big part of it is an advocacy piece, which is why we're here.
So do you usually have a member from each one?
We try to. It depends on month to month. Some months we have lots of people, and other months not as many representatives. And some organizations have more than one, like Rainbow Literacy tries to send both their executive director as well as one other staff member. But some months we get both, some we just get one or the other. The Health Unit tries to send one or two people, but we haven't been able to get them as frequently as they would like and as we would like. It's just hard to sometimes schedule it.
And sometimes it's just working groups too. If there's a certain purpose in mind that involves certain groups working together, it kind of brings them onto the table.
And where do you usually meet or call home?
Usually at the library, yeah.
Okay, library, okay.
Yeah, unless it's just Lori and I, and then she meets me at the school. Yeah, we're just meeting just to go through reports or specific projects. Yeah.
Change slides?
You're online, okay, perfect. So one of the main reasons that we exist is there is a perception that children, especially babies, are incredibly resilient, and that might be true to some degree. But there's been a lot of research that has come out around brain development in the last ten years. This area has really exploded, and what they've really learned is that brains don't just happen. And yes, every baby is born with a brain, but they are built through healthy relationships. And if those relationships aren't there in the first years of life, their brains have physical holes and parts, structures in their brains that just don't develop, and that becomes almost impossible to fix later. We can mediate and mitigate it a little bit, but we can never kind of totally repair that damage.
Move on to the next one.
This one shows the sensitive periods in brain development. So you can really see that in the first two years of life, and the first three years of life, sorry, is when the brain is most sensitive to setting up the physical structures that are needed for later cognition. So if they are not stimulated enough, they won't develop a proper vision center in their brain or a proper hearing center in their brain. Some of the more things you might more typically associate with learning, like social skills and numbers and symbol awareness, which would be things like understanding letters and numbers and things like that, do develop a little bit later. But the key structures in the brain need to be there before they are three. And they are only going to be there if there's a lot of interaction with the child. We can go to the next one. This is my favorite one. This is our money economics slide. One of the reasons that the Alberta government has decided to pursue the Early Childhood Coalitions and to fund each of the coalitions is that they've found that investing in the early years is one of the most efficient and the most productive investments that we can make in a program that is supporting parents prenatally up to about two years of age. They've found it's approximately an 800% return on that investment, which is pretty big. I would love to get that on my RRS piece, which obviously we're not. And that is both in increased taxes as well as decreased costs. So way fewer costs in terms of justice, health, education, social services, everything from food banks, all of those kinds of things. There's been a lot of studies in the last 10 years around the, they call it ACIS, it's an Adverse Childhood Experiences Studies, which shows that children who have adverse experiences in the zero to six range, significant adverse experiences, trauma in their home, they are statistically more likely to die earlier, up to 20 years earlier, have more health problems, and innumerable number of social problems and problems with the justice system and education. So and then that just becomes a cycle that gets passed on to the next generation, and then the next, up to about seven generations. So school is still a great time to invest, and preschool as well. You can see preschool is about 400% return, and school age is about 200%, which is still good too. So I'm not saying take money away from the schools, but a really good time to intervene is the zero-six, which is why organizations like Rainbow Literacy started the Building Blocks Program. Move on to the next one, Kim.
So the new data that we were talking about is called the EDI. It's the Early Development Instrument. And it's been used with over 1 million children in Canada. This was done in, released for the 2016 data in Alberta. And it can narrow down communities and how they're doing. We did not get enough children surveyed in our counties, so we don't have Vulcan data to share with you. They did with the Early Childhood Mapping Project. Many years ago, they did get data for Vulcan County, but not this time. So we get to share with you the provincial data. And it measures the readiness to learn for children entering school and tells us what, how kids are doing at the provincial level and at the community levels.
And compares them to the Canadian norm. So we're just, they're checking halfway through the year in kindergarten with the kindergarten teachers. They do this assessment and say these children are ready, or are they ready for kindergarten in these different development areas?
And so how, what was their experience like prior to getting to school, basically? And so where are our children at that stage? So the EDI measures five areas: physical health and wellbeing. It also includes things like what kind of family they're coming from. Do they have a jacket on a cold day? Are they able to hold a pencil? Are they able to climb stairs with two feet? So it's more than just their health. Social confidence looks at behavior in a structured environment such as the classroom and includes sub-scales related to learning as well as respect for others, curiosity, and a sense of responsibility.
Empathy is a big one for that one.
And emotional maturity focuses on behaviors in structured and unstructured environments: on the playground, being healthy, being aggressive, anxious behaviors, as well as hyperactivity or inattentiveness. And then, of course, we have language and cognitive development and communication and general knowledge skills. So those are the areas they look at on the EDI. And it's a big questionnaire that the teachers fill out based on all the children ones that we've gotten to know.
And one of the reasons why this year they didn't release the data for us was because they only collected the data for one year, whereas the first time that the provincial government organized this study, they collected data over two years. So by doing it over two years, Vulcan County had enough kids where they felt that there was enough evidence to say this is statistically relevant and an accurate picture, as well as there was a mix-up, I think, at the provincial level about including the private kindergartens. So this time, the private kindergartens, of which all of our kindergartens other than Vulcan are, were not included. So we were only able to collect information on 30 kids in Vulcan, and that doesn't give us enough of a picture as to how our whole county is doing. We're hoping that that can be sorted next time they collect data in another two years.
So this is what the EDI scores are for Alberta in 2016. Approximately three-quarters of young children are developing on track in the areas of physical health and wellbeing, social competence, emotional maturity, language and cognitive development, communication and general knowledge. Was the development area the smallest percentage of children developmentally on track? So 68.2% were on track in that area, and it had the highest vulnerability of 15.4%. So I'll just give you some time to look at those graphs, because you'll notice that if you add up those that are on track or at risk as well as vulnerable, it adds up to a fair number of kids in our province who are still struggling in each of those areas. And then there's also some kids who might be struggling in one area and other kids who might be struggling in multiple areas as well. Do you guys have any questions?
So how did we compare the last time to that?
We were very close to the provincial average. We were a little bit higher in a couple of areas, actually, as a community. We were higher in all areas but one, and I think that one was the language, no, communication and general knowledge was the one where we were at the provincial, or just slightly below all the other ones. We were a little bit above the provincial average last time.
29% of children in the province for whom the EDI was completed were experiencing vulnerability in one or more areas of development. It does not include children with diagnosed severe disabilities. So if they do have a diagnosed disability, they are, they have a separate questionnaire for those children.
And they were collected only at the provincial level, because we didn't want to release information, or they didn't want to release information that would potentially identify children in a small community like that. There might be three or four, and it'd be fairly obvious. So people looking at the data, who those might be.
And children who are identified as vulnerable in kindergarten are more likely to have later difficulties academically, emotionally, and in their relationships with peers. So it's something that we want to focus on strengthening, any of the vulnerabilities. And one of the greatest ways of doing that is at the community level. So why does the EDI data and development of young children matter to you? Because developmental health at school entry is strongly associated with their future development and life achievements. It might just be a snapshot of how they're doing right now, but there's always things that we can be doing to help children and families, sorry.
To set them on that trajectory for success, so we're not always trying to catch up. And then now, hopefully, we have a video on basic brain architecture.
So we'll have to, all have to play it through YouTube.
Modern science now tells us a great deal about how brains are built in childhood. Did you know that early childhood experiences actually change our brains in ways that affect our health throughout our lives?
Yeah, a very kind of rich and rapidly growing science about early childhood development, and particularly how early experiences affect long-term outcomes in life as well as physical and mental health. We also have a huge amount of new research that is helping us understand how adversity early in life, and particularly the toxic stress that young children can experience into the body and actually affects the development, like the texture of the brain.
So experiences we have in our earliest years affect how our brains get built. That's important, because the basic structures we develop as infants lay the foundation for more complex structures that develop as we grow. Just as a house needs a sturdy foundation to support the walls and roof, a brain needs a good base to support our future development. Positive interactions between young children and their caregivers literally build the architecture of the developing brain to provide a sturdy base for a lifetime of better health. On the other hand, if a child experiences a pileup of negative experiences, such as abuse or neglect, and if no caregiver is there to provide support, a sturdy brain foundation may never develop. That can lead to lifelong learning difficulties and health problems, including addiction and mental illness.
That affects the cardiovascular system, it affects the immune system. And so what this science is telling us is that we ignore the early years and our peril.
It's amazing to think that the experiences we have in our earliest years can affect our health for a lifetime. Since strong societies are made up of healthy individuals, it's up to us as a community to make sure all kids have the kinds of nurturing experiences they need to build healthy brains and bodies.
So we're not, the EDI isn't the only statistics out there that show us what kids are needing or lacking. Lots of you have probably heard things on the news over the past many years about kids not getting out and moving enough and spending too much time on their screens. One example of this is Participation that did a report card on the health of Canadian children. And they sort of graded what is their physical literacy at, what can schools do, what can communities do. And what, the things they sort of pointed out was that we need to encourage parents to have more unstructured play with their kids. We need to create opportunities to promote natural playgrounds, and we need to look at it at every single level to get kids out and moving, because they're not even sleeping properly, because they're not moving properly and getting tired enough to even sleep properly. So there, we have a handout there for you guys that gives you a few of the highlights from the Participation report. And you can just go on their website and see the whole report. It's kind of interesting. And we meant to hand out this investing in the early years one at the beginning when Katie was talking about the dollars and cents of investing in early years.
Just a couple of quick little cartoons that illustrate Lori's point about kids' outdoor experience has changed in recent years, and we need to get back to rough-and-tumble, risky play, messy play, playing in the mud, balancing on tree logs, jumping on rocks. You can go ahead to the next one. They all kind of illustrate the same point. Community, sometimes we, you know, we want to protect our children, which is important, and that is, we, you know, we want to protect our children, which is important, and that is part of our job, but it doesn't protect them if it doesn't develop their brains. So if we're protecting them and bubble wrapping them so much that they're at home and inside all day, every day, they're missing out on a whole lot, and their brains, their bodies are just not developing appropriately. And go ahead and through the whole one.
So what, some of the talk is about the risks and the benefits. So people have become very concerned about any risk to their children. Everything in the news is always about this danger and that danger. And the judgment as a parent of letting your children out to be independent and free and unsupervised. And so then children are staying in the house where they're safe and protected and always supervised. And they're missing out on those chances to climb trees and develop their gross motor skills. And they're not doing enough crafts and developing their fine motor skills. And they're not out playing with other kids where they have fights and have to figure out how to manage those fights and get over it. And so they're losing out on a lot of the resiliency that came naturally with play. And helping kids figure out sort of on their own and gain independence so that as they get older, they can do things independently that they gradually learn. So the risks of falling and hurting yourself and crossing the street are maybe seen as a lot bigger and a lot more dangerous than the risk of sitting inside and not getting the opportunities to play. So in our community, this comes down to what are we doing in our community for early childhood to help children develop and their important brains to develop? So in our community, we have a great deal of wonderful things. People here have been working hard in multiple organizations to create wonderful things in our community. The Pool Project is just one example of the great things that our community can do to make things better for kids. It's a great place to go. The daycare just got their $25 a day daycare, which is really very exciting, and it provides a great opportunity for people with low incomes to be able to afford daycare and maybe still have a job, because we know in Vulcan there's kind of a dichotomy of wage earning here. But maybe that will allow people to stay in our community as well.
And get the chance to have kids play with each other as opposed to just stay at home with mom and play video games.
And some of the simplest things in communities that we don't recognize are even things like the walking path. It's when I moved out of Vulcan and into the country, it was one of the biggest things I missed. I loved being out there with my stroller on the walking, it came walking path. So supporting things like that are very important to families. And programs like Time, like Rainbow Literacy that has a multitude of family literacy programs and adult literacy programs that can support those parents raising kids. Even things like nutrition and education are delivered through Rainbow Literacy. And then that gets to the families and helps those kids in those families. So they're very important programs, and there's so much, so many good things going on. I have another picture. Our arenas are all easily accessed and inexpensive to use. We have lots of public skating that any families can go to for free. And all our sports programs are very inexpensive when you talk to anybody who lives in a city. Our fees are extremely low.
The support of kids' sport is also really essential.
And then access to those facilities outside of structured sports as well. The play gyms that are in three communities right now was started by the Early Childhood Coalition and then taken over by the rep board here in town and the rep board in Milo. And those are great things, because the coalition isn't supposed to run programming, and it's great when another community group steps up and takes over. Because playgroups traditionally here have started, and they're extremely important to young, to new parents. It's sort of one of those first things that gets you out of your house with your child. And the more connected you are to your community, the more involved you're going to get and more supported you feel. And you learn so much from other parents who can share those stories and even share the mistakes that you've made raising your children. Those are some of the most important things. And because it's been taken over by the rep board and sustained, it will keep going. Whereas when one small mom group decides to do it, it starts up and it goes for a while, and their kids grow up, and then it fizzles, and the toys that were collected are left behind in some church basement. And so those kind of programs are just very important and essential, and we should recognize the great things that they're doing.
They sometimes seem like additional, like fluff pieces, but they really are helping the kids develop in every area: their gross motor, their fine motor, their play skills, and their language skills. So that's very, very important.
And grants and things that help us purchase equipment like that are sometimes a one-off thing, but they make a big difference. So kids can get out there and take part in some rough-and-tumble play. I just found a new article about big body play and how some daycare centers and preschools are actually putting in kind of like a little wrestling area in there. I sent it to all the preschool teachers. I haven't heard back, so I'm sorry. But they're just recognizing that need to actually get physical and play in a physical way. And then I have a picture in there of the librarians, because I think they're wonderful people. They've been supportive to my family in there. It's just a lovely place to go. And it's just people in the community that are there helping out kids, helping out families. And they're not the only ones. There's many wonderful places in this town. We also have pictures of the Teddy Bear in the Park program that's going on right now, as well as the gymnastics camp. And SDSS runs a multitude of workshops and programs all the time to just help people get connected and find the resources that they need for the needs that they're having now. So any support of any of those programs all helps to make this a pretty good community to live in.
Because it does take a village to raise a child.
So then my question would be after that is, what are the things that we still need to address? And what do we need to work on? What are the barriers? What are the things that we can do to look at the people that are vulnerable in our community?
We'd love to get your feedback as well. That's a big part of our role as a coalition, is talking to different organizations, parents, schools, municipalities, and finding where are the gaps, what are the holes? What do you wish we had more of, less of? And how can we work together to do that?
One of the things we would like for you guys to consider is just thinking of early childhood with whatever comes across your desk. Whether it be a little tidbit in your mind when you're working on a new project. How does this affect seniors, but how does it affect early childhood as well? So even in projects such as downtown revitalization, what are those things that you can incorporate that support early childhood and families in our area? Things to think about are like sidewalks that are accessible to strollers. There's some communities that have embedded in sort of public spaces just simple things for families, whether it, like a, they're sort of like stepping stones, but show the feet jumping. And then a little tidbit to parents to, about how jumping on those and then engaging your kid in that activity, can you switch it up and do the opposite of what those feet are showing you to get your kid using their brain and thinking a little differently? So any, anytime anything is being built, you can always incorporate something into it that can add to that project. Anytime we can provide opportunities to play and make it friendly to play, because play is so important. It helps children learn and develop, and it leads to healthy brain development. It helps with their social, emotional, physical, problem-solving, and critical thinking. Helps them develop their fine motor skills and their gross motor skills, and it builds resilience so that they can deal with the challenges in their lives. And anything you guys could do to help keep fees low? And things inexpensive for families also contributes to that. And nurturing a safe environment, so people feel like they can let their kids out to roam free and not have people...
Feel like they have to whip out the phone to entertain their kids.
And just to feel safe, like this is a safe place to go, and there are safe and one friendly people here to help you. And if your kid gets in trouble, they can ask anybody sort of on the street for that assistance and not be afraid to be out there alone or in trouble. Because everybody's out there looking out for each other, not reporting each other.
So will this help the helicopter parent syndrome?
That's what we can hope. It was a discussion, it was, yeah. It was a discussion about risky play at the gathering of different coalitions about encouraging parents to let their kids be outside alone and unsupervised more. I mean, not at three. I mean, not at three, but maybe in your backyard at three, right? Without somebody standing over top of them. But there are people that will pick up the phone and report their neighbors because their child is unsupervised in their own backyard. And so part of it is even just educating police to say, no, that's not wrong. And go back to the neighbor that reported them and, and educating everybody about independence because not everybody...
Yeah, and that sometimes it's good for kids to walk to school and things like that. And that, yes, you do need to teach them how first and release that responsibility carefully over time when they're ready.
And things like the bike rodeo are great because you're giving them that opportunity to learn some skills about crossing the street safely. And there's home alone courses and, and even things like an empty lot with a dirt pile are a great place for a child to go and play, not a dangerous place, right? So it's, people have come to view things sort of the opposite way of what is healthy for kids.
Is block parenting still around or is that...
I had seen anything about that in our community for years.
Block, I mean, it was around when we were, you know what I mean? Just out of curiosity, because that kind of seems to really tie in, especially in a smaller community like ours.
Yeah, there's very few communities that have block parenting now. I'm not sure why. And I'm not sure why it stopped being a thing here. I heard a rumor once upon a time that it was because you can't, if a sign is up and somebody isn't home, that doesn't help the kid, but I'm not sure.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank very much for taking the time to come.
Thanks for having us.
And I'm sure that if there's any suggestions or ideas, I'm sure that they'll...
You know where to share it.
We know who to shoot at.
That's right. And we do meet monthly, so if something comes up, I mean, you guys are welcome to attend the meeting at any time. Or if you have questions, feel free to send them to Laura or if you want advice. If you're building a project or something and you'd like some ideas of how to incorporate things for early childhood, we're available.
When are your monthly meetings? Usually the middle of Wednesday of the month. It depends a little based on the people who can come. Yeah, and then around one o'clock at the library on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you very much again. And thanks for taking the time to come. Perfect. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
My son has a problem.
All right, well, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Yes, somebody wish to move up for information? Any question on Lyle's motion for information? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving on to correspondence. There was a letter there from the peace officer on the site we property. Trying to proceed.
More for information on, for council on how we're gonna proceed with this. There's both the correspondence from the peace officer and the correspondence from the development officer. And more just, yeah, correspondence information so you know how, some of the action that we're trying to do to remediate what's going on there.
Okay, the next one is the letter from Alberta government. Or I'm not sure, sorry, Alberta government. It was Alberta transportation on this bike rodeo or bike law enforcement ride for Special Olympics. It really doesn't affect us per se through town, but...
No, we make sure that you're aware of it in case you have any questions or concerns that are brought forward.
So they're not coming up into town at that time?
No.
Not this time. They have in the past.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce from Pichibut inviting us to a parade. I think we should take these couple and, you know, and send a letter and say thank you. And hopefully next year we'll have a float that's ready to, what do you guys think?
Explain the circumstances.
Yeah, because they're kind enough to waste or invest in the, I was gonna say waste their time and send us a letter, but invest their time and send us a letter thanking or inviting us. I think if we sent a letter back saying, you know, keep us in mind for next year, let us know when it is.
Direct administration to respond by a letter and, and remember for next year.
Okay, so Paul moves that we send a letter to the two, the five-four and the five-five. And if, you know, if any more come in to, I think it'd be only proof to do that.
Do a thank you letter and...
Yeah, because they're kind enough to send us an invite. I think we should respond with that.
If you don't respond this year, they may not send it next year from what you have our...
When you do have the float ready.
Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, Alberta Municipal Affairs sent us the letter of, again, the four or five programs that are being run and how much money we anticipate receiving. Okay, any question on any of those? Somebody wish to move the correspondence to be filed? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the new business, the replacement of the arena condenser. It's kind of straightforward. There is pricing there and they came back with some suggestions on how we could fund it.
StarTech's not the one we had problems with?
No, StarTech is the, our long-term contractor. The only area of discussion for council with this one is the glycol hookups, which in the end will show cost savings on the amount of water that's used because currently we keep the system cooled with water and the ammonia. So by switching to the glycol, the glycol is recycled, so whereas the water is spent off. So through, through the report that was put together through StarTech, based on long-term cost savings on operation costs, they're suggesting switching to glycol. At the very, very least, it didn't cost anymore to put it into the condenser. And then if you'd like to add the system in the future, you could. The suggestion from Public Works was to include it now if at all possible. So the motions that were put together were to include the glycol system and the overall cost.
Had we expected a $20,000 donation from the Curling Club?
No, what happened was when council gave this back to administration to look for funding options, we would get additional grant funding, of course, based on the Curling Club using the condenser as part of our agreement. That's one of our shared piece of equipment. They were the first ones to be asked and they responded with, because it's as crucial to their, their components as it is to ours. So and then again, the request as per our recreation agreement for 15% of the remaining funding to come from the county. And I talked to the administration and the councils of the county.
Okay, so more reviews. Okay, so more reviews. Proof this.
I apologize for this most annoying tickle.
Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, Tourism Department Volcom request.
Paul, I'm sorry, just going back to the condenser, it wasn't a question for Laura's motion. For this being replaced, like just in regards to what happened in, was it DC last year with the arena? And is this having a new condenser, I guess, make things safer at our arena?
We went through it. After that, the provinces, the dispersed inspectors, we had an inspection go through and our system was, well, we didn't get anything other than our safety plan update, which was, which has been completed, was the only, only area of concern that they had. We use, we use an ammonia system, which is the same system that's there, but we have alarms on our, on our system.
But we also, I don't know if their system used a brine system or not, because I mean, ammonia was in the...
The building itself, not in so much like ours. Theoretically is mainly contained to that small building at the back. And then they use a brine system that goes into the arena. I'm not sure if Furny's was the same way.
And it may have been the location of their, their maintenance room. Ours is, our mechanical room is in a separate building, only tied to our arena through a pit. So there's a three-by-three pit that runs from one building to the other, so.
I'm not sure, I mean, it's a good question, but I don't think that ours in, like Lowman's is a, you know, current equipment was a freon system, same as ours used to be a freon system, but they're, so I really don't know.
And the provinces, since the Furny accident, they've been a lot more vigilant about having inspectors out. I know Lowman and Vulcan were done pretty much within a week of each other. So and the concerns of both of them, the only issues brought back were the safety plans. And we just needed to update our information.
Good question. Okay, moving on to six-two, Tourism Department Volcom request.
Two requests and they're straight, very, very straightforward. And the one is to waive the public swim fees for when the end of the parade is there to draw people there to participate in it. And they would also like council to participate in the trade.
Okay, so George Lee moves both. Yeah, sure, one motion. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, request for signage.
Province would like to put up signs for the election. And Nancy's provided a report with four options. Both edges of Main Street on turning into town, the tourist center from on north, the area along Highway 23 where the signage is usually posted for the demolition derby, that sort of, in that way. That one would be pending transportation's approval for temporary signage, but it seems how the request is coming from the province. I'm guessing the temporary approval may be well received, so. To allow?
Laura moves to allow this.
At location A?
Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to six-four, Historical Society's request.
I do want to point out that there's a mistake in my report. I put Second Street South. It's actually Second Street North. It says Second Street North on the, in the first background, but Second Street South in the recommendations. It is in fact Second Street North. And this is the area where they put the new storage warehouse.
That's First Street.
First, First Street North, sorry.
Two-two-one, First Street South, but north, yeah.
And so up until the construction, because it's adjoining it and forms part of that parking lot, we maintain the grass. Council had made a motion in the past to, I believe in 2015, to do the mow the grass while we're there, as we did with other shared facilities. So their request is to assist with bringing some topsoil, getting the yard reestablished. And to do that, they would like a meter temporary, or irrigation service, which we've installed in different areas of town.
Is that service still...
The service for the basement house is still there, yeah. So really, they're servicing into the property already. When the house was there, we just cut it off at the property line. So all we'd have to do is dig down, hook back onto it, bring it up to the top, put in a turf box so that it can, we can pull the gear out in the winter time when we shut the service off. And their request for the ongoing maintenance for mowing, we've already passed a motion for that, but they would like to reconfirm and...
So the box is the metered seasonal irrigation system, or service?
Yeah.
I thought it was really something quite fancy. And me, it is.
It's a little green turf box with a meter in it, making sure we know how much water they're putting on the grass.
And we have reasonable supply of topsoil?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we wish to, Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Pool Project. It's fairly self-explanatory. There was two groups that have met a couple times or tried to meet a couple times to come up with a plan. So they met yet again and have come back with a, a request to go to, to have two RFPs. One for the pool basin and mechanical and the second RFP is for a pool house, you know, pool structure building.
So the reason for going for RFP is that when we do the proposal, we can actually now, based on everything that the committee's put together, we can actually go out for the proposal so that people can give us very accurate budget numbers to bring back to council for approval. So based on the information that was provided and from motions that you saw from that committee, it was to include all of the equipment that was discussed at the committee level, bring it back. And part of the RFP process is we're going to have things identified as separate line items. Things like hot tubs, water slides, all of those things will be separate line items. So that when they get brought back to council for approval, it will be done at this level. So the purpose of the, as the motion reads, the purpose is to accurately provide budgetary cost estimates and to identify eligible construction contractors for the proposed project. So this gets you to that stuff where you will know exactly what it will cost and who can do it.
Any question on Lyle's motion?
I was just wondering, did they have quite a bit of, I'm hoping, congeniality on, on how to put the school and all the things together?
Well, I think so. I think, I think the first group met with like a designer of George Lee who sat on it for, and, and came up with some good ideas. They went to the schools. They had a couple of public, public meetings, open houses forums on it. And took that, all the input and kind of melded it together. Then the second group kind of went into the, you know, the operational side of it and the construction of, you know, which is, and where we could save some dollars and cents on the construction side of it. Went into the operational side of, you know, chemicals, the pumps, the heating systems, you know, how they could house them and make it economical enough.
Filtration was a big one.
Filtration was a big one. And so then they brought that back together, melded it and discussed all the options. And there was, I think there was quite a good debate and discussion on how to proceed. And then the two motions came out, you know, to proceed in with the RFPs that we know, like Kim said, exactly what dollars and cents. And then from there, you know, we can kind of go back and say, you know, what, how much has been raised by, you know, public money? And then how much has been raised or, you know, will be committed by the town? And then we can approach the county to see what they'll commit. So by breaking the RFP into the two and then breaking the one of the RFP into, you know, three or four different areas, it kind of allows you that opportunity to say, you know, in what direction can we move forward on? The other advantage of doing this is that we kind of put it together so that, you know, we can get going on it. So if there is, you know, the Lions Club's got another big fundraiser again, they can, you know, promote it. So if there is, you know, the Lions Club's got another big fundraiser again, they can, you know, promote it and, and use this as a, you know, kicking off point. There is also, they're hoping to apply for a grant this fall. And again, so they're going after, you know, support from other communities.
The Lions Club is?
No, the, the town is going to, is it Tourism?
No, the Lions Club's applying for a CFP grab.
A CFP.
For matching funds, but of course some of the matching funds will come from what we've, what we have.
Yeah, what we're raising, yeah. But, but they will, under the CFP grab, they ask for support from the municipalities. So they're, you know, sending out letters to all the municipalities to, for support. Plus anybody like, you know, any Lions Club, or Alex, Kidsman, all the service clubs, not only locally, but, you know, throughout the whole county, or been kind of canvassed to see if they get their support, so. So I think it's been a fairly, you know, I mean, they've, I think they've done their homework on trying to come up with, you know, a plan that is, is, is friendly as possible. No matter what you do, you're gonna have some people that think that they should have more in one area and not as much in the others, but.
At the end of the day, the proposal's being brought back to town council because it's a capital item for the town. So trying to get you as much detailed information as you can. That's why the RFP, we're gonna try to itemize some items and try to set. Because of course with the room, with the group in the room, everybody had a different set of priorities. So at the end of the day, when tax dollars are involved, you guys need as much information as you can to decide how that's gonna be, be balanced.
So, any other questions on it, or, okay, Lorna's moved this, so any, since no other questions, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to addition tonight, the CPR road closure. Originally Kim sent it out that there were Florida five thirty-four on Saturday and Center Street on Sunday. Five thirty-four got postponed to Sunday and Center Street didn't get done, so.
So, so I was in contact with CP Rail today. The, the reason why they postponed Center Street was because of the train derailment in Renear. So they have confirmed that they would like to schedule the work for Thursday, the twenty-first, which actually gives us enough time to, for council to do a proper road closure. And so we need a resolution from council to close Center Street for the day of Thursday, July twenty-first. And Public Works will set up barricades just to make sure we don't have any pedestrian traffic while they're trying to go through there. And closing off the tracks is fairly simple because we can do it right at the Center Street intersection. And then, of course, at St. Clair Road, and the only thing that we have to do is post down at the other end by the gas bar saying that it's local traffic. So.
So you said Thursday?
Thursday, June twenty. June twenty-first.
Okay. Paul moves this. Any questions on this at all? All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, move on to community reports. There are a couple there. FCSS. April twenty-sixth. Any questions on any of that one? And then May, May fourth for Mays and Reeves. Any question on either one of those? Hearing none? Somebody wish to move them? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, and now we're moving on to councillor reports. Mr. Taylor.
I have nothing at this point, other than I have a fair few people want to talk about police officers. We'll talk about that later.
Okay. Okay. George Lee?
Well, we had the parade on Saturday. We thought it was a lot of fun, great turnout. And I also had tourism. They're taking the north part of the tourist center down and they're gonna make it into a museum honoring Mr. Spock in there, so. And they've got the green screen up in there and running now, so now people can go in there, get their picture taken behind a, a Star Trek picture, whatever, and that. So they're quite excited about that. Dana Dickinson, she is coming over to do some training for it for about two hours. I figure she's gonna need her for about two hours, just to train her and the staff on some things, because Dana was excellent when she was here, so. So we thought, and Bonnie got a grant to pay for half of what it's gonna cost us to bring Dana over, so. Our legal issues we had down there is running a minute, so that's good. And I also had the rec board. Anything else on runnin' tourism, sure Nora, Nora can tell, she keeps all the minutes, so. But the rec board, it was basically everything that's in Bonnie's report, was what we discussed at the rec meeting. Just remind everybody that Porch Fest is this Friday night. I think there's about eight spots around, just, it seems to be all up in the one area, area of town anyway. There's Peter Dawson, Lorna's Hoag, Scott Mitchell's, it says Free Beer, but he's not giving a note, that's the name of the band that's playing there. It's Free Beer, so everybody leave with his site, so he's not handing out beer. And then Gordy Goldhog, Lorraine Kirk, something at the pool. So it's, you know, and there's all different timelines on it. We talked about from five to nine thirty, but I see on here it says six to eight, and somewhere else it said six to ten thirty.
See, and they told me five thirty, I don't.
Well, that's what we discussed at the, at the rec board meeting, that it would be between five and five thirty. But, so, I would say if you go at five o'clock, you're sure to get it, so.
And so, and where is it posted with like the actual addresses on it?
It'll be, it's on the website, it's on the website of the rec board. Actually, I think she's got it posted all over Facebook, too.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's.
I'll go find out. Okay.
And if you find out the right time, you should let us all know.
Anything else, George?
Nope.
Any question for George Lee? Okay, move on to Laura.
On Thursday, June seventh, I had the Old Van River Regional Services Commission AGI in Lockbridge. And just a few highlights, they did pretty good this year. They had excess revenues going into reserves. Their goal is to get their reserves up to the five million dollar mark, which is a long way to go. They were doing well, and then if you're supposed to go to recession hit and knock things down, but they're slowly building their way back up there. Again, their talking points, there was a, the executives working on trademarks for Orsk maps and information, because there was a private planner that used Orsk information for one of the plans and charged the village or town for that information. The maps and stuff from Orsk belong to all of our communities. The issue is that the planner used that information and did not acknowledge Orsk. Like, we're supposed to learn that years ago in school, if you take something out of the encyclopedia, you wanna do that and continue not to wanna do that, so there's a bit of that. Wanna do that and continue not to wanna do that, so there's a bit of that issue there. So the executive's working on, on how to deal with that. And last thing that we talked about was cannabis. And the law is coming up there. Just looking for clarification on, you know, is it four plants you can have per household? Edibles will not be legal for at least the first year, once they've been, the law's been passed. And what should we as a community do for when it comes to cannabis? Gavin gave us four options. One, do nothing. Just gonna take it as it comes, I guess. The other one, make areas direct controlled, so you can kind of make rules on the fly on where places can be set up. You can do setbacks from certain uses, such as schools, healthcare facilities, daycares, libraries. You know, have them set back, maybe if it's on the back, for this piece of a commercial or industrial area, even if there's no services there. You're not telling people you can't sit up there, you're just saying, if you wanna do it, this is where it's at. Because the fourth option, are, are bans on it, but municipalities cannot prohibit cannabis retail, is what we're told. So there's gotta be just ways, ways to work around that. The Alberta Gaming and the, easy for me. AGLC shows limits on times where stores can be open. ASH.ca is a template for smoking by law, that's what they're looking at for cannabis operators as well. Business licenses, we can limit, limit the number of licenses in town, like say if we just have one. And you can also limit the business sign, size, and shape. Like you can't have a big, if you want, I just think you have a big cannabis sign, but I'm assuming you just have a, a little one, just so that it's not as, as prevalent.
Sorry, just a question. So municipalities can't prohibit retail, but we can limit business licenses, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
You can't say, the way I understand it, is you can't say, no, you can't set up shop here. But you can have, you can have one business there, just like you could limit the number of liquor stores you have in town. You can say, well, no, we're just gonna have one shop, and it's gonna be located, oh, past the green elevator, that's the only place you can.
Yeah, you can, you can set the distance away from schools and libraries and healthcare facilities, over and above what the province says.
Basically, then.
So if they say five hundred feet, we could say, you know, it's, you know, four miles, and so now this is a county issue. That type thing, you know, that's probably not quite true, but.
So you, you can't say, no, we're not, no, we're not having it in town, but these are the guidelines, if you, you will let you have it, but these are the guidelines that you guys need.
Okay.
That's no different than any other.
One, if.
It's, it's noteworthy that the federal government already has quite a few regulations that they've already sent out on, not on the retail side yet, but they've already done for the production side. We looked at it from a development side for the town of Vulcan, and there is a very, very small window area that could be used for production. And it may, it's prohibitive for anybody to actually, we had to come and look at it, and they just can't make it work because of the size, it's basically, so.
But an AGLC, like you say, have their restrictions too, so. So there is, there is quite a bit of criteria out there. It's just that some municipalities, like, you know, you've heard of the city of Calgary, are trying to, you know, go through this, right? Because there's going to potentially be more of them there than would be, you know, out in our area.
The cities are really working on, focusing on where consumption can be at this point. So you probably saw on the news, they, they're allowing consumption at festivals, that sort of thing. That's more where they're looking at it, is where, where in the public you're allowed to, to consume, so.
And it's the same kind of thing, same type of thing, where that is like the French regulations dictate the minimum, and if we wanna go above and beyond that, we can, as long as those are.
We cannot permit.
Yeah, as long as they're fair and equitable.
Yeah. You can't infringe on people's rights.
My, my four miles was not fair and equitable.
Only incomes, less than four miles.
Three point nine five. Anything else, Laura?
No, obviously.
Any other questions for Laura? Okay, move on to Laura.
I have tourism, and there's just a couple of things I want to add. There's still work with Nancy going on for a new vendor's booth for events and shows. And the licensing, they're looking at adding Discovery to new series. They're looking into what it's gonna cost to add Discovery to our licensing.
Anything else? Any question for Laura?
What does that mean for adding Discovery?
Well, because then we can use imaging and stuff from the new series, like we can get shirts with stuff from the new series and add it too, but you have to pay the licensing fees on, on all of that, but it all has to be kind of added individually.
Our, our license isn't exclusive to just Star Trek, it's to certain portions of Star Trek, so every time you add one they want.
A percentage.
Or maybe.
A percentage, so. We manage which ones are most popular and try to keep our license up to date that way.
Well, and then if, like shirts from Discovery or sweatshirts with those characters and stuff, you have to have a separate licensing to be able to add that to what they're selling down there. You're welcome.
Okay, Cheryl.
I didn't have any community meetings, but on May thirty-first, I met with Ursula Sherwood with Community Futures Highwood. And we'll actually be planning another meeting in July, just because then we didn't have time to go over everything. But the biggest kind of points and proposal version of what we're doing is really sitting down and trying to identify any gaps, opportunities in the community, especially with things like, you know, what's going on with the chamber and BBS and stuff like that. The biggest, like right now is the time to really sit down and go over, okay, what is the community needs? And what resources can we utilize with Community Futures? To make sure that we are, you know, really trying to get the most out of our membership there. And also as part of that too, with a lot of the surrounding communities going through and seeing what the collaboration opportunities might be as well. You know, same thing, it's Vulcan as a town, you know, maybe we don't, especially with the, like that, need a full-time, you know, fill in the blank position, but with X amount of other communities that are involved with Community Futures, maybe they can actually help facilitate and that kind of thing. So, yeah, and then unfortunately Very Welling, which is our brand new member-at-large for Community Futures, was able to make it. So in July as well, hoping to do that, and then also from that get a rough outline and also go over the specifics with their involvement in the high school and how they're actually gonna be integrating it in the game plan for next year in their com program. So, that's it.
That's it. Any questions from Cheryl? Laura?
I have Marcus Foundation, and I have what I call a seniors housing meeting that, do we have a name for that committee, Tom?
The viability committee.
Oh, I can write that down.
All the rest with viability committee on the end.
Oh, okay. And so we had our regular Marcus Foundation meeting, and we're looking at working on a three-year business plan for goals, strategic priority initiatives, the, uh, reports require expected outcomes and performance measures, which for the most part are fairly easy to come up with. And then we meet over policies, and so we've set aside sort of like we did with the challenge. And at each meeting, we will do some, not all of them, and so that's been working out quite well. We then went to, so that was on the Tuesday, and then the Thursday, and I'm not sure the date's here anymore. We had the viability meeting, and we met with the, two people down, no, three people down from the Colgers group in Calgary. And then they did a presentation on what they could do for a feasibility and viability study for the Marcus Foundation. And then we went back to another Marcus Foundation meeting, and we passed that, we agreed to hire them, that organization as our viability and feasibility. Sounds clear, sounds good. And so they will give us some external support and guidance, and we haven't heard back from them. And so they will give us some external support and guidance, and we haven't heard back from them just yet, but I think we should hear fairly soon. I also had the health and wellness meeting, and the fitness challenge went very well this year again. The groundbreaking, I was hoping I would hear today what day it's gonna be, but I didn't, so I'm gonna say soon. And I think it really has to be soon. And the AGM will be on June twenty seventh at the hospital classroom, and people are welcome to come and attend. It's at two PM in the afternoon. The Heritage Wall, which is part of the fundraising component of the health and wellness, have about sixty-five families now, so that's been quite good. And the gala in November, on November third will be, I believe they're gonna speak to the Graham family, but I think they're going to have another Oktoberfest in honor of Donna Graham, who was a board member for many years and who has passed away, so.
Laura, I think that was all I had right now.
So, any other location for the AGM?
Uh, in the hospital classroom, June twenty seventh at two PM.
Okay, any other questions for Laura? Thank you. I went to, down to a meeting sponsored by South Gore, and there was a gentleman there who brought in from Denmark. Well, he's, he's really from Vancouver via Denmark. He lived in Vancouver for ten more few years, but he's a... I was gonna say an ambassador for Denmark, but that's not true, it's, he has something to do with the Denmark government anyway, but he lives in Vancouver. And his major discussion was on recycling, you know, what they do over in Denmark to get rid of their, their waste. I went mainly because of Seawall and to see what they did. And he said it took them thirty-five years to get where they're at in Denmark. And their, their major thing is, is in the recycling end, but trying to recycle more locally. And I think that that's what everybody is trying to conquer here. So it was, it was good to, to, to listen to what, you know, but it's not as easy as people think. There are some people think that within five or ten years, we can have zero waste, you know, which is a fallacy. But there are people out there that, you know, dream of multicolors. But anyway, it was, it was an interesting event. The other one I went to, like, with, with Laura, with this viability feasibility study with the Marcus Foundation. It was very, they did a good job, the, the group. There was a little bit of homework done on some of the behalfs to see how they have done in other communities, very, very positive. So I think there'll be a, a good outcome from that, to, while looking to our, you know, auxiliary, our, our long-term, our assisted living, our, hopefully we can come up with a resolution to assist us in getting some more senior housing in our community. The other one was the pool community meeting, and we just passed the motion to move forward on that. I did meet with Scott and Andrea Lacourche and two other gentlemen on the Health Foundation to move forward, to see how we're gonna move forward on, on the new hospital. And like Martha said, they're hoping to release a start date or start training ceremony. So once they know, they'll, I'm sure, share that with everybody. Seawall executive met, and they'll be releasing their latest information on, on AGM soon. I went to the county barbecue, and, which was pretty good, visited with some of the county councillors and some of the other people. And prayed, and thank you everybody for showing up on time, you didn't show up when I asked you to, you'd have been late. I guess we might have been at the back of the parade instead of the front, but heard lots of kudos on, everybody looked good. Matter of fact, Nanton said that if we could all come over to Nanton's for their parade, they'd much be appreciated, but if whoever could come, so again, Joan and I were gonna go over anyway, but it was, turned out quite well. So thank you very, everybody for showing up. I also went to Rainbow Literacy, you know, their opening, had their tour and looked through their facility and how they have changed it, yet they haven't changed it much from what it was when BBS had. Other than that, that's pretty all it for me. Any questions on... Okay, somebody wish to move the council reports? Question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's good, thank you. Okay, moving on to administration reports, we'll start off with Mr. Potts.
Do you have the action list? As we changed it, the grade didn't come through as well, but anything highlighted is completed and will not be on the list again. So, just a couple of things outstanding from the last meeting.
From December twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Yes, that's the...
What is that about?
That was, George Lee brought a request that she had received from the public about bat boxes for the dog park.
Oh, okay.
And there was a discussion about them needing shelter and whatnot, so the golf course adopted a similar program. So we are receiving the information from the golf course, but basically they said they needed more than a year's data to let us know if they were successful or not, so we've been just kind of waiting for that data. Because putting them up where there's no trees or anything may, may not be a good use of land, so.
I just have no idea.
It, it's something that's been on my list for a long time, so. Until we get that information, which we will bring back to council hopefully fairly soon.
As they keep eating stills, I mean.
Yeah, the rest is straightforward action items, unless anybody has a question on it. And then my report, of course, follows with the, the activities since the last meeting. We're working with SEMA on the street program. Of course, you know, the delays and the grade issues, we signed off on new drawings, so we're hoping to get that started really quick, so.
Okay, any questions for Kim? Okay, moving on to development officers.
She's here, she can ask you lots of questions.
I don't think that's fair. We are supposed to answer you.
Oh, yeah. That's pretty straightforward.
Yes. Any questions on Nancy's? Okay, moving on to public works.
Stu did ask me to pass along that the walking path will be paved tomorrow. There's going to be crews coming in tomorrow. The wheelchair accessible portions of it will not be completed until after the pavement, they're gonna, because there's seven of them, they're gonna schedule it when they aren't trying to do seven other projects at the same time, so.
So, so they're just paving and just kind of, and then...
And then they'll, they'll...
That's what I kind of anticipated that they're probably going to do, but it's surprising how many people are walking down.
Twenty-five hundred gallons brings out to twelve thousand a day. Gallons brings out to twelve thousand a day.
I thought they found leak.
They found some.
Found some.
There's more.
And every winter, they should.
That's why with the new design of this new pool, there's a pit that crawls around the whole perimeter of the pool, so if you have a leak in the line, you can find it, you crawl around the perimeter of the pool and you find a leak and fix it.
Instead of jackhammering, backs up.
Trying to dig through the sand and the dirt. I mean, technology has changed, I mean, even from Champions to this one, the technology has changed, so.
And Laura, we, we have lost that amount of water in the past, so.
And that, that twelve thousand dollars a day might include...
Gout.
Or gallons damage, might include the...
Evaporation.
But the water park too, because it's not separated off.
Yeah, that's totally useless.
That's totally useless, so, you know, on a cool day, you might have more of a realistic, because, but a nice really super hot day, or... The water park would use that much. Water park could use that much in one day.
About them.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Birch's?
They planted trees as well today.
I saw them, I hoped, put a couple, yeah.
Believe, believe they put seventeen in today.
Where?
Up beside your house.
Yeah, there's two, there's two on your front boulevard.
And that's what those sticks were there for the other day, I saw those.
Yeah, they did, did quite a few on the avenue that have been down for a couple of years. Concentrated on some of the areas where we've completed our construction, so they can now grow without being...
Pretty bad, I ran by there to get here and I didn't even see them.
I bet you you'll notice, I bet you you'll notice on the way home.
I was kind of on a mission on the way here.
Yeah, that's right.
I see some of the fire pits were used on the weekends, so. So I, I never asked anybody how, how they liked them, but I'm sure they'll be well received.
And the fireworks were phenomenal.
Oh, that has nothing to do with the...
Oh, sure does. I've had the park.
Probably works credit for a firework. They are helping you out, aren't they?
Uh, I, yes, I know, they always do. Any, anything else on Stu's? Did the truck, the big truck show up today?
No, Thursday.
On Thursday? Okay, no other questions? Moving on to the community services report.
That's a huge number of kids attending the microdio, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was really good.
Yeah, it sounds really good.
It was a partnership with the schools, so they brought them over and graded, so it worked out really well.
I saw it somewhere about it, there was a picture of that microdio, I don't remember where I saw that though. And, you know, it looked like they had it set up really quite neat, and the kids were going through these different...
They went through stations.
Stations, it really looked neat, I, but I don't remember where I saw that.
The feedback we got was very positive.
Well, that's good, it's, it's great to see, 'cause more or less what the two young ladies said earlier too, you know, it's, it's a program that's been offered in the community, it's really, potentially has some great benefits. Anything else, any thoughts on monies? Okay, moving on to the fire department.
Were you able to pull a little whirl and ribbon in there?
Yes. That looks good.
Are these numbers about what we usually have? I suppose it just depends on the temperature or the weather and how dry the conditions are too. And I guess you can't have a real specific time for faults and alarms anymore.
Yeah, you can't have those for sure.
They become more frequent than when you, until you talk to people, we'll charge them for them.
Okay, any questions on Peter's report? Hearing none, somebody wish to move administrative reports? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none on favor, that's good. Okay, need a motion to move in camera. La moves in camera. Any questions? Hearing none on the paper. We have a motion from Paul to move out of camera, which was approved. So we have two motions from the information that was brought up on camera.
So based on the information from ten point one, the industrial subdivision lot offered to purchase, the motion that will be put on the floor is council directs administration to further negotiate on the offer to purchase of lots two, four, and seven, block seventy-two, plan E six one zero five zero five, and directs administration to prepare a local improvement plan for the curb gutter gravel road construction at Jameson Road.
Is it two, four, and seven? Two, three, and seven.
Two, three, and seven, sorry.
And La, do you have a question on?
I was just making that motion.
Okay, so La moves this. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, so our second motion.
On item ten point two, the community peace officer position review, direct administration to begin the recruitment process for...
A peace officer, don't make that.
Paul makes the motion to direct administration to begin the recruitment process for a peace officer.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, two are opposed. It is carried. Looking for a lot, another motion. Cheryl moves to adjourn. Any question? All in favor? That's carried, thank you, thank you. Everybody staying late.